I ain't got one, we'll get new ones. I forgot my mask.
I'm rushed. Can I have your mask?
I got one right here.
I put my glasses on, they just fog them up.
All right, I'm gonna call the special meeting of the Macon County Board of Commissioners to order. And I would like to welcome all of you that are here in attendance today. I guess there's some questions arising of why we're here. So I'm gonna give a little background. I wrote up a quick statement before I made my way down today, just to give a little history of where we came from and why we're here today. And then we'll start our discussion. Approximately two years ago, we began the due diligence process of studying the needs of Macon Middle School. We hired architects, we hired engineers, we hired financial professionals, we had unanimous support of our Board of Education. We had meetings upon meetings, upon meetings and upon meetings, and finally at our commission meeting. Earlier this month, we voted unanimously to proceed with the approximately 10 million renovation of Macon Middle School. Following that meeting approximately two weeks ago, so between now, a little bit after that time, the Commissioner Young is our new appointee, his liaison to the school board, called me on my cell, an unexpected call. And he said that he was getting ready to go into his first school facilities meeting with Commissioner Shields, county staff, and I believe some members of our Macon County Board of Education to discuss the upcoming renovation of Macon Middle School. Since Commissioner Shields is a new commissioner, he was just literally getting brought up to speed on what was gonna be happening there. Sorry, Commissioner Young, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Young expressed to me during that phone call that he was having significant reservations about proceeding ahead with that renovation. And he at that time presented a very quick scenario of a different idea. And then he followed that up with me on the phone call, and he had two questions for me. Question number one, is it too late in the process to introduce this idea? And I responded that I do not know, but it may be. He then asked me if he had my support to introduce this concept at this meeting. And I responded by saying that he has my 100% support to support or to introduce his idea to the group and to please utilize my name if need be. Following that meeting, Commissioner Young has become even more diligent with his belief that we are making a tremendous mistake by proceeding ahead with the MMS renovation and that there might be a better solution. I can attest that he has been completely engulfed with his new concept and how it could improve or perhaps help the future of our school system. He has also been in what I personally call Commissioner anguish. My fellow commissioners up here will understand that. You see, he's hurting inside. It's because he's worried about being a new commissioner, he's worried about public response, he's worried about the hours and hours and the money that's been spent on this project. He's worried about if he's caused too big of an uproar by creating this new proposal. He's worried about upsetting his fellow commissioners. It's something that I deal with often, and again, I refer to it as Commissioner anguish. As a newly elected official, Commissioner Young is still very new at how the government system works. But he is full of ideas on how we can make things better, and he obviously has the energy to want to seed for seed to chase this concept. I have told him that his idea may not get the support of this board, but we will never know until he presents it to us, and thus we are here today. Commissioner Young, as you know, we are down to the absolute last minute. You have now initiated a very difficult conversation, but an important one, and you thus have the floor.
Thank you, Chairman Tate. Listen, I really appreciate the opportunity. I appreciate the opportunity you placed on me as liaison, and I haven't taken that lightly. I want to make it clear that I'm not here to undermine any of my fellow commissioners, any of the county staff. There have been people working diligently on this process for years, I mean years, countless hours. And it's not my job to walk in here and play Monday morning quarterback and just, "Oh yeah, you guys, whatever, listen to what I have to say, my idea's the best." But I feel like if I kept this inside, that I would have regretted it. So I called Mr. Tate and asked, again, if it's too late to start this process, is it something I can still, you know, try to make happen? And he, as you heard him say, "Go right ahead." So initially, I had some concerns regarding the Macon Middle School renovation, okay? I was under the assumption that we were gonna get a brand new school. We're gonna keep the foundation, keep the footprint, brand new school, 40, 45 years, no problem, good to go. And I made a trip out to middle school, did some due diligence on myself, with myself. I started talking to our Macon staff, I started talking to some people in the community, people who know the history behind that building. And I called a liaison meeting to meet with the school board to address my concerns. So I don't mean to sound harsh, but I asked, I said, "Are we putting a 10 and a half million dollar Band-Aid on our middle school?" Secondly, once we get done, we're gonna have to turn right around and build an outdoor changing facility. We're gonna have a $13 million investment at this middle school. I mean, $13 million on a building built in 1974. So I pitched this idea, and believe it or not, listen, I had overwhelming support from the school board, okay? So I received an email, okay, doing some more due diligence from some of our firm contractors, people who have been involved in this process. And I wanna share with you a section of email. It says here, "Based on the condition of the roof, the walls, the windows, as well as interior and mechanical systems, MIS Moisture Intrusion Solutions strongly recommend replacement of these buildings be considered. While these buildings can be renovated..." None of the three going into our new school, we decline that. So they have a form, okay? It's a checklist to determine whether to renovate the school or replace the school. He said Macon Middle School literally is right on the page, he says right on the button. But if you think about today's time, 2021, there are 32 points of entry into that school. Okay, schools today are built vertically, maybe in a linear segment, they go up. Mr. Sealy explained to me that he hasn't built a school less than three stories, since he can't recall when. So now it's, not only is it outdated, you can raise the point of safety. All right, so taking a step further, last meeting, we talked about Commissioner, maybe plans or what you wanna see happen in the community, and I brought up the high school track. I think it's a liability, I think it's terrible, the middle school track isn't any better. And we had some discussions here with Mr. Bill, Mr. Shields, Mr. Bill and I, and I agree with Mr. Bill. We don't wanna put any more money in that track, it's a lost cause. I mean, there's a creek under the track, the DOT turned all the water down on us, I 100% agree. Mr. Shields stressed comments about high school students traveling cartwheeling to Macon Middle School. I remember when I was in high school, we used to ride in a bag of pickup trucks. I explained to these guys in a meeting that I lost all of the catcher gear one time because the tailgate was open. We were trying to save gas money, or so we thought, the bag falls out, we never found it again. So that's a real problem. So I've just shown you a lot of problems, how do we fix this, how do we combat an issue, does anybody have any ideas? So I got to looking at an aerial, a topography map of the county, and I noticed we have a 14 acre parcel adjoining Macon Middle School. So I reached out to the owner, Mr. Gray, and he was in overwhelming support. If this would, you know, suit the county's needs, he would more than, he'd be honored to let the county acquire this property. So I thought that was really cool of him. I step back, I look at the soccer field, I look at the site as a whole, okay? We have a 34 acre middle school, a 14 acre new parcel, I mean, there's 48 acres combined with shared facilities. So I wanna share with you, I just mentioned a few property sizes. I'm not gonna name the parcels or where they are, but right here, I'm gonna share with you the properties that the county has previously been looking into for the high school, the new high school that we've been talking about for 13 years, maybe longer. But right here, there's a 16 acre parcel, a 33 acre parcel, a 27 acre parcel, a 24 acre parcel. The number one was 63 acres in size, but it was along the Georgia Road, and I think there's a lot of opposition there. So the four next properties in line are all smaller than our current Macon Middle School. So I step back and I start looking at a plan, and I'm like, wait a minute. What if there's a way we don't display students? We come down here, we take that $13 million, we build a middle school, we talk, we have the discussion. I'm not a school planner, I want you to understand, this isn't what I do. But I think it's worth talking about. So I also asked Mark a couple more questions, we talked for a long time, a long time. He said, "Josh, we talked about school sizes and cost per square foot." He said, "We need 150 to 155 square foot per high school student." Said, "If we anticipate 800 students at the middle school, 1,200 students at the high school." I'm throwing numbers out way premature, but I just wanna paint a picture here. Macon Middle School, we're using the number 30. Now, I've heard numbers as low as 22, 25 thrown around the county, let's say 30 million in middle school. But the high school at the same calculations is 55.8 million. So it's on a piece of property that we already own. And I feel like we can start addressing a lot, a lot of compounding issues. He referred to the high school as a ticking time bomb, I think we all know that, the high school's in 1964, 60, 65 years old. So again, I wanna reiterate, I'm not a school planner, I don't think, there may be a better piece of property. There may be a better facility that will house all of this, but us as leaders in the community, I think we owe it to the taxpayers to look down a different avenue, to look down all avenues and make sure we're making the right decision before we spend this $13 million. So let's talk about current needs. Right now, speaking with the school board, we have two, two elementary schools that need additional space, two. Estimated repairs, I think the numbers came from Derek, correct me if I'm wrong Derek, 3.5 million dollar or thereabouts cost per renovation. Speaking with the school board, if we plan this out right, we can at this point shift all of our grade levels up a grade level, which means we'll have K through 3 in our elementary, a 4, 5 at the intermediate, and 6, 7, 8 at the middle school. So now we just gain capacity in all of our schools, all of our schools, but being mindful of the new construction, we just potentially saved $7 million. But I don't wanna be condescending, there is some wasted money if we don't do renovations, okay? There's a million dollars, probably more than a million dollars, in countless time and hours. So I'm just thinking out loud that maybe some of the pros may outweigh the cons, and the term throwing good money at bad may come into effect here. So where are the funds, where's the money? That's the big question, where are we gonna get the money? I wanna be very clear that I said, I wrote, I dislike taxes, I hate taxes, I don't like taxes. I feel like the money isn't spent effectively, and I feel like if we could see it, it'd make me feel better about taxes, but it is a necessary evil. So how is everybody else figuring this out, but yet we seem to not be able to figure it out? You know, I look at Clay County, I look at Jackson County, I look at Haywood County two times, look at Swain County, a new high school, Cherokee County, it's across state lines, but Rayburn County has probably the nicest facility I've ever seen. Going into Jackson, I'm sorry, to Buncombe, Henderson, they figured it out. And it's our job to figure it out and find a way, okay? I talked with Derek, and maybe these numbers can back me up and correct me if I'm wrong, but right now, we have $30 million, I'm sorry, about $30 million in a fund balance in a piggy bank, maybe the high twenties.
It's 20, about 25 million.
We have $25 million in the fund balance. So I feel like we can use a combination, right now, if I'm not speaking out of context, we can use a combination of a bond, a loan, and some of our fund balance, and we will not have to even discuss taxes until 2026, it buys us five years. And as a commissioner, I feel like there's some hard numbers, we haven't, I haven't even been through a budgeting process yet. So there's a lot of learning to do, I feel like there's some money we can redirect. Also, look at our economy, I mean, this COVID thing, it's sad, but our zip code, it's really been affected for the good. People are wanting to move in, our revenues are up, our property sales are up, sales tax is up. So yeah, there's a lot of avenues, I do not wanna talk about sales tax, I wanna find a way to do this now, but I wanna have the time to look into this. I feel like our back's against the wall, and I'll face it, we're fixing to sell the bond. So I wanna talk about real quick, the track and the football field, and that's probably my largest concern. The children are being neglected, I wanna make sure that's clear. There have been 35 track conference championships, 11 running state titles since 1991, four state runner-ups, 23 regional championships, 36 individual state championships, 22 cross-country championships, nine state titles in cheerleading, one national title in cheerleading, and we don't even have a track. We have a track, but we're talking about tearing it up, and we don't even know what's gonna happen, but there's a creek underneath it, so we don't even know. Like, we don't know what's gonna happen. But if we step back and come up with a plan, and that's all I'm asking, is to consider a plan. We go to the middle school, we step back, and we come up with a plan. I say the whole board, the whole school board, we can put a committee together, I really don't like the sound of that because I feel like nothing ever happens, we put committees, look into something, it takes 15 years, next thing I know, we don't even need the school anymore, they're all doing it virtual, I don't know. But listen, keep moving forward on some of these points, I don't wanna dwell on the bad, but I think it's important. It's not just a football field, it's an athletic facility, okay? Talking about youth athletics, okay? The youth gets to use it, the relay for life gets to use it on the Saturday on the weekends, the soccer team, the band team, the track and field. Our wrestling program right now trains at the fairgrounds. Our visiting high school students right now, and this will address that if we vote to pass legislation, but right now our visiting high school and middle school students change on the bus, change on the bus. Okay, so you have a high school baseball game, well, yeah, just, y'all do your thing, you know, we're right here when you get ready. So I wanna bring up the point, I feel like we're in reaction mode, okay? We react to a problem when it arises, but we're not proactive, we don't, we don't see these problems arising, or I feel like we're kinda lagging in terms of education. So we've had discussion on the high school the past 13 years. And I wanna be clear, the high school is sentimental to me, sentimental to my family, probably most of the board up here. I mean, I played, Mr. Shields especially, I played ball on that high school field, my daddy played ball there, my son has, it's hard, these are hard decisions. But everything has a lifespan, okay, nothing lasts forever. All right, just thinking out loud, again, I'm not a school planner, but there's a good chance we could, at some point in time after we build the middle school, consider leveling the middle school and building a new high school right there. So that map, I don't know if it's turned the right way, there's a map in front of the podium, the map that's been on the screen, that map shows pictures, okay, it shows a footprint, and... Derek, I can't really see it, but is that little white, there you go. So the footprints in the shaded area on top of the new schools and the existing schools, that's a square foot footprint. So I believe for the high school, we went 180,000 square feet.
There you go.
There we go, all right, there we go. So the high school has a 60,000 square foot footprint. We go up three elevations, right now our high school currently has two, that's the footprint of 180,000 square foot building on the property. Okay, if you go dead south below the softball field on the potential new property, it's a 40,000 acre square foot facility. Go up three stories, we're 120,000, I'm sorry, it's 40,000 acre square foot footprint, 120,000 square foot building, three stories. And right now, I think our current facilities are 103,000 square feet, that whole footprint is 103,000 square feet. So again, I don't mean these images to be deceptive, I'm not a planner. I think, again, what I'm asking for is the time, the due diligence, to just look into a bigger plan before we keep throwing 10, 12, 15 million dollars at a school that I'm not so confident that these repairs are really gonna fix all the needs. That's a lot of the point of this meeting. So to finish up, what are we gonna do with the high school? Now we're gonna have a big black hole in the heart of Franklin, and nobody wants to see that. All right, we have to consolidate, all right? Union Academy's probably one of the oldest schools we have on the books, there's room, I think we move Union to the high school. Close down a building, look, we sell the structure, it's old, it's not our job to maintain all these buildings. I think our maintenance is part of the reason we don't have any money right now. Best of my recollection, South Macon cooks the food for Union, they truck all the food in, it's time, that school is, it's a free bleeder. Secondly, we move the school board, we move the whole building, maintenance at all, we move it all, we gotta consolidate, we've got buildings everywhere. And so consolidation may help, you know, fund or maybe we can recapture some revenue, I don't know. Again, I'm just asking that we go down this road and look. So really fast, you're gonna hear just a minute, and these documents right here show us that, that, look, we're in a position right now that we risk losing points or losing a percentage on our interest rate, okay? We risk losing the percent we're locked in at or the estimated rate that we have right now. Secondly, we risk a contract with our builders, I mean, it's about to expire, it's, we had three bids, the bids came in way, way, way below we thought. We added some more work or some more scope onto that. So I'm sure we could take back, we could readjust is what I'm saying. I think it's important that we at least take the time to consider a bigger plan, a bigger picture before we keep throwing money, just, you know, big, big wounds, Band-Aids on really big wounds. So I ask that we can get together, the school board, commissioners, I think the taxpayers would appreciate us taking a step back and just reevaluate, all right? I worry right now, if we spend the money on the middle school, we'll hear the numbers in just a minute, but, you know, it's 50, 60, 80 million dollar high school. Look, when do we, when are we gonna fix the track? Like, when are we gonna have the money to? Like, when are we gonna have the property? We've been looking for this property since 2000, I know 2008, but I've heard a lot longer than that. So once we spend the money on renovations, once we build the new outdoor changing facilities, you can take this plan and throw it out the window, it's gone, we spent the money, it's over with, and that's my urgency. That's why I called this meeting, I had this stuff I wanted to get off my chest. I'm sure, listen, we're gonna have some big problems on that plan. Right now, the DOT is actively pursuing a fix to the traffic problem. We have a major, major traffic problem out there right now. So again, this is a potential plan, it's a staging plan, this isn't gonna happen right away. Hopefully it's a tenure plan, maybe it's less, maybe it's more, we talked about referendums, who knows? We could talk about a lot of different scenarios. But it's gonna take time for the state, for the county, for everybody to work together on that plan. There's a proposed new access, it comes straight from the roundabout, right to the three new schools. That will be our fifth point of access, I think we'll use that to our advantage. Again, I'm sure I've thought about this for weeks, like I said, I struggled to bring it forward because I don't wanna walk in here and act like I'm Mr. Know-It-All, and here I am, but I thought that if I would have held it in, I would have regretted it. I think the taxpayers deserve us looking into this, and all I'm asking from you gentlemen is just to take a deep breath, let's not cancel our renovations, let's not, let's not postpone them longer than what we feel comfortable. Right now, today, I spoke with the school board, they're willing to give us time, we have time, they're not in any imminent rush. There are big problems, but we're not underwater, they're keeping us afloat. So let's take six months, let's take a small period of time. So, let's take six months, let's take a small period of time. I think the taxpayers understand if, if our bonds go up a little bit, or materials go up a little bit, or there's some extra cost, I think they'll step back and say, you know what? They're, they're, they're looking out for us, they're working on it, and, you know, they'll have some confidence. Right now, one of the reasons I ran is because I feel like nothing ever happens in government. It takes so long, you talk about all this stuff, you hear about it, you hear about it, and I shared that with the school board, it's a little bit frustrating, just to be honest with you, because you, you hear all this talk, I mean, talk, talk, and I just want to start finding real solutions to real problems. I think this is a potential, I'm not dead set on this plan, I just think we, we spend some time, spend a little bit of money, spend a little effort, and see if it works, and see if this is what, you know, the taxpayers would appreciate from us. Thank you for your time.
Any questions? I'm gonna grab a water for you.
Yeah.
All right, I, I know there's a lot to discuss, and Josh just took twenty minutes to describe what he gave me in two minutes on the phone when I gave him my backing to proceed, because I thought it was an idea of merit, and, and as, as my Appalachian twang wants to say, it might be a good rabbit to go chase. So, again, I give him that, and he's given that, and it seems like the more he digs into it, the more it starts to make sense, and I can appreciate that. I do have a background in land planning, that's what my degree's in. So I, I understand where he's going, and I understand how important having a plan is for our county. I mean, how, how do you know where you're going to go home this afternoon if you don't have a plan on how to get there? So I, I can appreciate that. I mean, either, there's, I could sit here and list a whole page of questions I have about, just immediately from how you pay for it, number one. How much would it cost if we do put a delay on this project for thirty days? How big of a delay will this put on other projects that we need to handle, such as a jail expansion, such as senior services, to, to, if we handle this with all new buildings, do we start putting Band-Aids on something else? It's, it's, they're very, very, very tough questions, and it's times that, I mentioned the, the term commissioner anguish earlier, it's, it's the reasons that I wake up at three o'clock in the morning, don't go back to sleep, because I'll start worrying about, are we, are we as commissioners doing the best we can with the money that we have for our constituents? Make no mistake, our kids are our most important asset in this county, and it's up to us to take care of them. I am in support of Josh's thoughts, I am in support of moving forward with some type of a, a plan and setting some type of direction. I know we have been talking about this all the time, for a long time, but I think it's time, maybe we, we investigate a little bit deeper. And I'm interested to hear some of the other individuals' thoughts in here, and see if we can, it's just a, it's just a problem, how do we find a solution to it? I'm happy to be open-minded and discuss it, seems to be an important topic, based upon the emails and texts I've received the past few days. Seems to be catching streams.
Yes.
Anyway, I hadn't been, my email hadn't been this busy since the Second Amendment was under conversation, so.
Let's do a better job on this.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's important that we go back and look at the history. The liaison, liaison committee started with the school board about fifteen years ago. From Senator Davis, former Senator Davis and I became liaisons to the school board. And during the past time, I don't know if, if Commissioner Young has not been able to keep up, but I think we've done more as far as across the county of any school system without tax rates hikes. We built, just right offhand, we built two new schools, we totally renovated Union Academy, not to mention the work in the gyms, the work in the schools. Have you got that number, Ben Chastain, of how much we spent the last fifteen years on the school?
Well, in the last ten, outside of the capital outlay and annual operating, we've spent about twenty-five million in the last ten years.
And so during these liaison committee meetings, anything that come up, that's right, it takes so long to do anything, therefore, to come to the new high school, Lord, we've had that conversation. We even agreed, both boards even agreed on the piece of land to put it on. And, but you can't, we can't go in the real estate business with that kind of money. When you're talking, I don't know where the fifty-five million come from, you call any candidate to build a high school in the past ten years, and they'll tell you why they talked to build a high school. I think we're looking more in the ninety million range, easy, or a hundred. So, and that's the numbers we had long time ago, with that kind of money. So, and what that's going to mean is a huge tax hike. This board is not inclined to do that, so that means you put it to a referendum. I think we all know what happens when that, you put it to a referendum. So are we elected to make that decision? That's a decision this board has to make. As far as the middle grade school goes, we look at Ever Avenue, some of the things that Commissioner Young, and I do appreciate Josh looking at these things, and I, and new ideas are wonderful. But unfortunately, these are things we've already looked at, about everything Josh mentioned. We've talked about the land that, that Mr. Drake has now acquired, before he acquired it, unfortunately gets in a swamp, and most of that land is not usable, what we would want. We've talked about the middle grade school, what we should do. It's took two years to get to the point, and what our people tell us with these renovations that we're about to do, that we should get decades more use out of that school. Is that school constructed? We've had the principal of the school, we've met with him over the years, we have addressed some of the security issues in this new construction. There are too many points of entry, but the way that school's designed, it certainly wouldn't be designed when we build the one that Josh is talking about now. That would not be the design of the school. But I think over time that you have new people and new, and new ideas. After Mr. Davis came off the board, I believe it was me and Brian McFelly that assumed that responsibility with the liaison board, and then me and Mr. Shields. And then, but during that time, we've always had a good relationship with the school board. They know that, that the money we spend is the biggest part of our pie, is to the school system, where it shouldn't be, that's the state's responsibility, but they don't keep up for that too well. Had it not been for the work of our finance department and the work that they put in to do the renovations, but I think Josh has a, but when you start looking down the road at a new high school, we went through everything. We went from putting the high school where it is now, doing it in section, Jim remembers that well, turning it from the front to the back, doing new property, the grading, the new football fields, the new gyms, we've been down all those roads. And, and until now, Mr. Chairman, nobody has really had the desire to see a forty or fifty percent tax increase to the people of Macon County, because ultimately, that's who has to pay for it. That's who, that's who's doing this renovation is the people of Macon County. So, I think that the work that we put in, the experts we've all talked to, the times that we've, for years, we've, we've seen what to get to, to try to get the prices down, because we do have other things on the burner, a lot of other things. And we don't have, and it sounds like a huge amount of money, that thirty million, it's took decades to make that fund balance where it is. That just didn't happen in two years. It's took decades of, of pretty good judicial responsibility of this board for a lot of years. So, so, Mr. Chairman, my thought is, I think that Josh's ideas should have some merit. I don't think the middle grade is a place for a high school, that place can never stand that congestion. The DOT has looked at some things, but nothing's in the burner, nothing's in the, in the works. I think that for now, I mean, the best that we can do, we can't afford to lose a million dollars and postpone this thing, kick the can again, and that's all you'd be doing, because what we don't realize, in thirty days, we're not going to get nothing done. Six months is going to be tough. And I'd like to ask Lori Hall to speak, and I think, and the county manager, of what we've went through to get this thing to the LGC the way it is now. Not to mention that when you start talking about a new high school, and all the things to consolidate, like we did the other schools, there are folks on this board that didn't even want to consolidate the old schools, Olusaja, all them old schools, which we really would have been in a pickle had we not. But I think to say that this board has been lax in supporting the schools and the new construction, or whatever they need, is just absolutely not true. I think this board has proven to do whatever it takes to take care of our schools and infrastructure and personnel, as far as that goes. So that's where I'm at, Mr. Chairman, I support, we move ahead with the renovations as outlined, that this county's worked two years on. It'll give this community several decades to get ready and, and a new high school. Am I saying it's not needed? No, sir. Anybody on that school board will tell you, I've always been a proponent, but you've got to have the money. And there are only one place to get the money, and that's out of the pockets of the citizens of Macon County. And we've just not had the will, I've never seen nothing from the school board asking us to raise taxes by forty, fifty percent to build a new high school, I've never seen anything from them saying that. This board, I don't think, has, I don't have that in my radar to raise that kind of taxes. We don't know where the school system is even going. The superintendent will tell you. We don't know what schools are even going to look like in ten years. This COVID thing has changed the way education works, it's changed the way everything works. We hope it comes back to when we can go to football games, maybe tonight, maybe. But it's changed a lot. We don't know what schools want to be, but we do know what we've got to do, and that's preserve what the Macon County people have invested in, they have invested in a middle grade school. And over the years, we have put some money into it, but not to this extent. Is this late getting done? It sure is. But have we not, it's not because of negligence, it's not because we wasn't trying. We have worked on it continually for several years. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I do appreciate Commissioner Young's side into the future. I think that's important to have. But I think at this point down the road, we've all had a vote, we've all had an opportunity. I don't think we'll be losing a penny, because in ten or twelve years, or whenever this could be, that's a long time off. And in government years, that's probably twenty or thirty. So I would support us moving ahead as planned. The only thing I would add, and I'll certainly be quiet, Mr. Chairman, is I would definitely support, for one thing, since our bids came in, much better we anticipated, I would support that athletic, that we already have the athletic bill at middle grade, we already have the plan for, we've already got general quotes, right, Mr. Manager? And I would certainly include that in this renovation and build that athletic facility, because Josh Young is exactly, it is embarrassing to change clothes on the bus. We play football in Robbinsville, Little League football, and we have to do the same thing, that's been a few days ago. So, I would, Mr. Chairman, certainly support that at this time. But, Mr. Chairman, also, we've got to look down the road. What's, here's the fact, the growing section of our county is senior citizens by far, not students, it's senior citizens, and that, that don't look like it's going to change in the near future. That don't mean we neglect the children, but it also mean we don't neglect our senior citizens. So, and there's a lot of other, the sheriff is sitting back there, the sheriff will tell you, there's a lot of things, I've been fortunate enough to be his liaison for a number of years, and learned a lot of things that we've had to kick the can down the road and, and worried out, Sheriff, doing that. So EMS, does EMS need a new full station? Yes, they do, tomorrow. They need a new EMS station tomorrow. There are so many needs in our county, so you have to prioritize of what you're going to get the most bang for your buck of right now. And our finance office, our county manager's done a wonderful job of putting these bids together, that's one of the reasons they came in so low. Yes, it took two years, but because of the work of, of our superintendent and the school board, working with our county manager and our finance director, that's one of the reasons we've got good prices. So I think at this point in time, in the future of our county, Mr. Chairman, we could not make a better decision than to do the renovations at middle grade. But I'd also love to have a conversation real soon, because that money can come out of fund balance, and do that athletic facility at middle grade at the same time, because we were so worried about our budget, where it's going to come in, our sales tax number. This board don't have no desire, I think I expect for myself and some others I've talked to, to raise any taxes. Our revaluation's coming, folks, and it's coming soon. Your taxes are going to be raised whether you want them or not. That's what's going to happen, because the revale, sell the property Commissioner Young talked about, you're going to see our revale change our tax rate to make it revenue neutral. So with those, with all those items coming up, we have a chance to make this a more quality place for educating the children at the middle grade. I think it would be foolish to discard this, this work and the programs we've got, especially the price that we have, Mr. Chairman. So with that, I'm at my position known that I think we should go ahead with our renovation. I do think it's a great idea for the school liaison, for the school board, to bring this board proposal, you know? But when you're talking about designing and putting a high school, we done found out it takes years, it takes a long time. And you hear Josh mention these other counties, simple how they do it, they raise taxes. So that's how, as far as over to reservation, of course, it's fed money, different world. But these other counties that built the new schools, Johnston County's building, I think they built eight new high schools in the past four years, all of them averaged about a hundred and thirty million, so, but it takes, we don't have the population, the majority of our population being senior citizens, tax rates are very important, it's very important to us all. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I will be quiet. But my support is that we go ahead with it as planned, and I would love to see us include the athletic facility at the middle grade school.
The, as, Mr. Young and I have talked quite a bit about positions on things, and he knows where my position is, I've shared with none of where his position is. My position is to continue with the project as we've developed here over the last two The referendum, what my understanding is, when you, twenty twenty-two, you can get a reading of the county of how they feel about taxes and stuff like that, capital outlay type things, by having a referendum. We had planned to have, put something on a referendum for the twenty twenty, because you have to go into even number of years. And when you do that, it gives us a readout on what they, after the planning. Now, Mr. Young knows this, high school on Macon Middle School campus as our vision is not a good idea. Three hundred more cars on Wells Grove and Clark Stepper Road, and there are students, you're in for a mess. Now, there's a, I hear what he says about, and I looked on the map, about that other entryware area, but you're still putting that much congestion and safety within that arena. I think in this planning thing, that one thing we should look at is inviting the parents. When you start saying you're going to put a high school on Macon Middle School campus, invite the middle school parents, the, invite the Macon MBI parents, what kind of congestion they're dealing with now, and see if they're open to three more hundred cars, teenagers in them. And you're building, and ask the people in the community there. So I'm not against the middle school concept, it's just, if you start delaying things now, grass be growing on your feet. We need to go ahead and do something. When Dr. Baldwin talked to Mr. Bill Nye a couple of years ago, and then Mr. Madison took us over and showed us around the school, think your school's about to implode. It's terrible. So I'll use, Mr. Young, a Band-Aid. So I'll use, Mr. Young, a Band-Aid, and I know what Mr. Higginson did in the military as a medic. Sometimes instead of bleeding out, that Band-Aid's good. And some kind of term, some kind of something you put on, and that Band-Aid is not a permanent thing, but it can stabilize something until you get somewhere else. Paul, as a medic, you understand what I'm talking about. And I guess from my position, I'm trying to stabilize something. I'm like Mr. Young and some of you. I'm scared when we delay something. But I'm not sure when it comes back up. A plan, yes. You can't, you can't go from here to the beach without a, some kind of plan, GPS or something, you've got to have something. But if you start delaying it, then we're in trouble. One thing that Mr. Young and I have talked about now, we talked a long time yesterday, and I encouraged him to present his position, right or wrong?
Yes, sir.
That's what we're about. We're in the United States of America. But also, I was going to present my position. But that's, that's what this is about, the whole thing here. We're not dictators or something, but this is what we're about. But in the planning part, I'm seventy-four years old, Lord have mercy. I may not see what, but what I guess I'm dealing with now is in the moment. And what Mr. Maslin and Dr. Baldwin and Mr. Talon has shown us, let's say, two years ago, this is the best Band-Aid I've got at a reasonable price. Now, I, when you start talking about thirty million dollars, stuff like that, you're losing Gary Shields. That's, that's a lot of money. But I think there is a time to check that, to see if your community's with you, is in twenty twenty-two. Put that referendum out there, see what the appetite is. But I'm not sure we want to wait two years in order to miss this opportunity. And so I said, I made the motion before, I am for the renovation in Macon Middle School. In planning, I'm for it. And I'll, gosh, that's a slow train, but I'm for it. But I don't want the school to bleed out while we're doing this. And I refer back to Mr. Higginson, I know what his military part was. You've got to put a Band-Aid on something, or that won't be around. And it, it's just, and we're in a dire situation. And here's, here's the other thing that's, Josh, Mr. Young brought it up. What y'all don't see is a space needs analysis piece that I've got here. We did this study two years ago, two years ago, on what, we hired a Muslim architect company, came in and said, look, we're going to look at your properties, your capital properties, and see what you, what you need to ditch, what you need to upgrade, what you need to, you need to rebuild something. And when you look here and you talk about, I don't know, Sheriff Holloway, but you look at those people, they have needs too. And so as a commissioner, I've had the emails too, that I don't care about kids anymore. Obviously, you don't know me, so I don't worry about you. But when I got on this board, I'd been with Dr. Baldwin for four years as a, as a board member, or three years, then one year with Dr. Baldwin. The, I'm just like Josh, I came in here thinking, I don't have a new high school for this summer. What would I have done then? It doesn't work that way. And to see, well, I had, I spent twenty-one years at Franklin High School and see it deteriorate, see that football field, see things like that, people, that hurts. But one thing that I learned working with this group, this county has a lot of needs. Here with, I'm picking on Paul today.
Yeah, I see, boy.
You are. And Nanahala, I think about Nanahala, and the people that work there, we got to do something about that place over there. This is something, it's important. They are part of Macon County too. And I'm going to say this, not intentionally, but I think they've been neglected. I think we're headed back to heaven that, but it's on here, it's in here. And so do you spend thirty million dollars and kill this here? I can't do that with good conscience. So I'm a bad name band, I'm just trying to keep the person, keep Macon Middle School from bleeding out. But I do understand what Mr. Young is talking about, about having a plan. And that's all I'm going to say, I'll support, I made the motion last time to continue on with the middle school project, and I haven't changed my mind that. But the planning part, I'm with Mr. Young. But immediate need, I need to stop the bleeding out of the middle school. Thank you very much.
All right, Paul. Thank y'all for coming today. I think this is a very important topic, and I pushed for a capital improvement plan. I think when I sat on this board, you got on it eight years ago, and it's not because of me, it's everybody wanted us, you got to have a plan. And I have seen a lack of a plan in overall education, not pointing fingers at any particular individual. It's when I first came on this board in one of the first meetings we had, we've got to build a new high school, it's going to be seventy-five hundred million dollars, we've already found the land. Wait a minute, guys, wait a minute. What, how does this fit into the overall plan? Why do we need it? How will it improve education? The building's old, let's build a new one. Well, that just, I started opposing right then, and I oppose it today because there is no plan, there's no overall plan. Josh and I have talked a couple of times on this, I don't do a lot of phone call or backdoor dealing, but Josh and I have talked a couple of times on this, and what has impressed me is his youthful vigor in education. And I strongly support this plan. The second thing he's talked to me about is consolidation. Typically, this government is spread out all over the county, there's good to that, it prevents that, that, too many cars in one place or whatever. Yeah, congestion. But his ideas, and I think some of the school board too, on consolidation intrigues me very much. It's, and this thing of, I've heard about the high school track before I came on this board, bubbling too small, can't help, well, what are we doing? We're talking, we're getting ready, we're getting ready. Well, I mean, you're eight years going on nine, we're not ready yet. But how long do we do this? How long do we put it off? And I'm not opposed to it, to new facilities, as long as they mesh, as long as it improves education, improves educational opportunities. I think, and I appreciate the work that's been done into this, and boy, to, so I've heard the number, we've got a million dollars invested in this proposed renovation already. Man, I need to see that go on. What does the new facility you're talking about, Ronnie, the?
Athletic facility, it carried a one point four.
Athletic outdoor.
It's, at the middle grade school.
So what's the total ticket for that?
About one point four, what?
Those were very informal, they were just.
Yeah, that was bad.
Formally, we, you remember when, when COVID hit, we made a decision early on to, that was originally in the original scope of the architect contract with SGA Narmore Ride. When we got into the planning process with the school system and county administration, we removed that building from the scope of SGA Narmore Ride, and then we had a local architect, Mr. Tom Ritter, draw up those plans. Now, as far as receiving any bids formally on those plans from any contractors, we have not.
Okay.
We pulled it front, we pulled it front.
Because of the money.
It's going to be, so overall, we're going to be at?
One point four.
Yeah.
That was, that was the guess to it then.
Yes, so one point four, one point five.
And that's pretty good.
Plus what we voted on was eight to ten.
Ten point five.
Ten point five. So twelve is what we're going to be at possibly.
If we do that.
If we do that and proceed, so. And the information that we've gathered now from about the condition of that building, I understand there's no waterproofing being included in the scope.
First I'd ever heard of that.
I don't know.
That's first I've heard.
First I ever heard of it, so, it's what Josh described, that there's no barrier. We know how the windows were leaking, it wasn't placed.
Well, architects, it's an interior wall of brick and an exterior wall of brick with a void between them.
That is your airspace.
And the gutters run through that void, the gutter collection.
That's going to be corrected in the renovation.
Okay, and then there's some plumbing, apparently, sewer, water drains in that void that are.
If the architect, Mark Sealy, he's on, he's available by phone right now for any, all we have to do is call his number and we can, you can talk with him any of the particulars that you have as far as what's going to be done in this renovation. So if you, if y'all want to do that, I'm cer, I can certainly call him right now.
So we're going to put conceivably twelve million in this project. What would a new middle school cost?
Estimates that we've received are thirty million dollars roughly around, and that's construction only, that's, that's not, you know, you're talking about, you've got to buy a property, so it would be, you know, right thirty-one, thirty-two, and again, that's just, it's an unknown. It, it's, it's an unknown at this point because we've not went through the process. We've not, we don't have plans, we haven't had those plans looked at and evaluated by an architect. So thirty million is, is a, what we're seeing and what, and consulting with design professionals would be what we feel comfortable budgeting for the cost of construction at this point without having any.
Did want to share anything with you? Middle school costs?
I'm sorry, stories. So there are numbers, and I would like to refer to the school board and to other people, there's a lot of different numbers, and that's kind of where I'm like, we, I've heard seventy million on a new high school, a hundred million, I heard a hundred and forty million, I've heard fifty million from Mr. Sealy. I put those numbers together based on his square footage and estimated cost to date. And as Dirk shared with me, you know, right now, building costs are through the roof, they're crazy, they're going up, they're high. But not this type of construction, this is, this is in a lag. Am I right, Dirk?
Yes.
This type of constructions, we, we anticipated twelve million, our cost came in at eight. You know, who knows? Like, we don't have any hard numbers, talk, throw the numbers out to the school board, we've heard twenty-two, twenty-five, like, nobody really knows. We've talked this over, again, going back to, let's just take a little more time and see, let's just see. Who, who really knows what's going to start, you know? We have estimates from years and years ago, price has gone down.
What bothers me is if we do this renovation, we've still got the same issues with security, the same issues with building sprawl, that thing spread out like a spider over there. Is it, is it practical to look at building a new middle school on that property that we have, leaving that old building? And then when we get down to the point of doing a high school, do it on the joint, if that whole project's feasible?
So I want to respond to Mr. Bill, that property he was talking about, it's on the list of high school potentials, and it was not suitable for a high school. So I think it's due to size, and right here, there is some floodplain issue, there's a small creek on there. Look, there's some due diligence to do on that property, it's not a perfect fit, it's not going to work right away. Again, I'm just saying, these are potential options that have not been discussed. And again, I'm not asking to terminate plans, I'm just asking that we just take a small period of time, and I don't want to extend this. If, if we decide that we can't go through with a plan or this plan or a plan, let's renovate the middle school, but a few months isn't going to hurt anything. We're not going to lose the money if we just take a deep breath, just tap the brakes. I'm not ripping this contract and throwing it away, just let's stop. Back up a minute and look at this picture from a different perspective, let's talk to the community like Mr. Shul says. Like, I would love to hear from Clark Chapel, I feel like I've been hearing from them, and what I'm hearing, I'm not going to speculate, but I would love to, and that's part of the due diligence I'm talking about. Let's, let's do that, you know, let's, let's hear from them.
I can, I can respect what you say, and I think that's part of the due diligence. But being here for this about sixth or seventh year, when you delay something six months, when we only meet once a month and then trying to connect with each other, middle school and the renovation that we put together at this time will be six months, one month of bleeding out. We're going to have to deal with this middle school, either in the renovation part, or you're looking at waiting on a referendum to see that people will support a new middle school? We're just finding places, ways to delay something. I, I feel like the renovation, it may cost us something, but to give up a million dollar study that we've already done, I have a, me personally, I have a hard time with that. I just don't want the county to look and say, well, six months now to roll out something else, we're doing another million dollar study. Then Josh is my former student, former football player, and I look at this and we compare analogies on sports. We're in the fourth quarter, we're in the fourth down, inches to go, and the team comes off the field. And I can't deal with that just coming off the field. Now, to me, that's what I envision if we're doing, we're leaving the field without playing that last few yards. And they need something over there, and I'll still go back to Mr. Maslin, the walk through was shocking to me. And I feel an obligation to do that renovation and get this thing moving. Hey, study, let's, let's do it, let's, let's see what we can do better. But I just feel a lack of need to do something now in order to justify this study, justify this million dollars, and I think the, the economy will support us at this time from an economic standpoint. I don't know what's down the road. We, we're in a pandemic time, we do not know what's down the road. I don't know. And, but when Mr. Young talks about tracks, high school and middle school, hey, I'm with him, let's talk about that. But delaying something is just what you're doing, you're delaying it. And I just don't see us having the energy sometime or the, get it fired back up, it just really hurts. Michelle?
Go.
I mean, would you guys be interested to hear from the school board? Would you gentlemen be interested to entertain a delay?
We've heard this talk for fifteen years, I think we're pretty good.
I just, if they would consider a delay, I'd be interested in hearing.
We've been to a lot of budget meetings, but never, never a meeting to discuss an educational plan.
I don't, I don't want to really mess something up if this is the direction you guys don't want us to go down, so just please.
They voted, the school board voted unanimously to proceed with this, as we did, so, unless something's changed at the school board.
Just the liaison committee and the discussion we had last week. But going back to the educational plans, you know, we have identified several properties for a high school, we've identified plans for constructing a new high school on site. We have plenty of plans that I'm willing to share at any point.
That's, they've never gotten all members of the board this list of potential, I've heard of one property.
We're not true.
Pardon?
No, we did, Paul, that's come before this board.
When?
So two or three times when we had the plans available for the property, I know we had a closed session on that, with property.
What do you say, is it, is it a bad idea in education to consolidate?
Depends on what, what you mean by.
With the middle school and the high school compound there, could that be a possibility?
I think that this, the proposal that Mr. Young has presented certainly has merit. I think it needs to be considered. There's, there's, what we see with, the plans that have been proposed and presented to this point, we're certainly pleased that we're considering, as Mr. Shul's pointed out, stopping the bleeding at Macon Middle School. He's exactly right, that building is about to implode, there's some serious issues. He's exactly right, that building is about to implode, there's some serious issues over there, as there are at the high school.
As we had at the high school for twelve years.
Exactly. The, Mr. Young's proposal addresses the issues that we have at Macon Middle School, it addresses the issues that we have at Franklin High School, it addresses, as he pointed out, the concerns that we have moving forward at the two elementary schools, we know that we're gonna have to add space due to the K-three size limits later. His plan also addresses the known needs regarding the athletic facilities at Franklin High School. Those things, we can't pass up the consideration of, of that type of proposal.
Yeah, I think it's. Like everybody's mentioned.
I, I speak for the, Mr. Chairman of the board right here with us, so I don't wanna step on his toes.
Paul's come a long way, he was against even closing down Coliseum School, vote against the budget because of it. So Paul's come a long way.
When did that happen, huh?
He voted against three budgets.
Yeah.
And you didn't, and you didn't wanna, cause you didn't, you said the schools need to stay where they're at, we need community schools.
Yeah, I supported community schools. Times changed, right? Times changed, exactly.
Yeah, you've come a long way.
I didn't know that these buildings rotted down, you know? We just, oh, we got one air stand, let's throw three million dollars in it and fix it, oh, we got another one here. Uh, now here, Paul.
And we've kept up with the plow pretty good.
Uh, we have.
We have, and it, had we, Dr. Ball kept up with it pretty well.
I'm not opposed to a new, new facility, it's gotta be part of the plan, just, just jumping here and yonder, so I, I don't think, I don't, I, I know we're into this thing, this proposed expansion, but I'm certainly supporting Josh's recommendation, let's, hey, let's take a deep breath, let's meet every night if we have to, let's get the community involved, I think that's why, we, we do meet once a month, a lot of times, one commissioner, don't know what, uh, uh, another liaison committee, had I known this building was seeping moisture into it, there's gonna be a mold issue somewhere, I didn't even heard that mentioned, but, but there's gonna be a mold issue if these, if.
I know nothing about none of this stuff that y'all are talking about, too, Mr. Young went to school, I knew nothing about none of it.
Had I known about that, I wouldn't have voted to proceed.
I knew nothing of this plan until Mr. Young went to sort the school.
I, I speak because I'm the liaison, I brought it forward, Mr. Bill. I brought, I brought the plan forward myself, not myself.
Yeah, I mean, I, I didn't know nothing about that.
Well, this plan, I just wanted to be clear, this plan.
I know it took us two years to get this far, to get this far, you can imagine all the other stuff that he just rattled off, a long way off.
Well, let me, let me clarify what the Board of Education did for all the commissioners. Mr. Young was our liaison at our last meeting, which is the first one he attended, he asked us, would we as a board go against his, if he came to y'all and asked for an extension of time to reconsider the project? Now, what he asked us to do was to answer that question, and that's what we did. Board met, we have no objections, we understand there's time, there's essence in time, but if there's a better alternative, which is what I think Mr. Young feels there is, wants to discuss, and we are not about to start pounding and saying, oh, no, no, we've gotta get something done, we gotta get something done now, that's what, so what we met, what we said, and I think I sent an email to Mr. Tate explaining, our board simply said, we're hoping, if you, if y'all as a board choose to, to wait a little while and relook at this project, we support that whole part of it. Because our whole plan is, gentlemen, we just want what's best for our children, that's all we're here for, that's what the Board of Education, I think is what y'all are here for. So hopefully that clarifies, Mr. Young, your, your question is, we're not pushing one plan or the other, we're simply answering questions you might have of us and trying to work with you for what comes out to be the best plan that we can come up with.
Let, let me just say something on Mr. Higginson's thing there. One of the major reasons that I went to the middle school to get a walkthrough, and I think Mr. Bill would say, was this mold, it's still there.
But just in one section.
Yeah, back there in that south side.
In the, in the music room.
Still, still there.
Well, we won't know for sure exactly what we have until we get into it, I think, so.
Right.
We're a little premature in saying there's this or there's that, am I right, Tracy? Cause until we actually get in there and get something known and look underneath the surface, we have no way of knowing that. But, but we do very much suspect there's some remediation that's gonna have to be done in that bottom part, most certainly, yes.
I believe there was a, when I looked at it, there was a discoloration within the wall.
Yes, there are, that you're leaking calcium out of your masonry now in that man area, like Mr. Bill was talking about, and also in the, what we used to call the eighth grade wing, uh, there's several spots in that wing that were.
Only thing I can say again, I'm repeating myself, it's bleeding out, Paul, you're a medic.
Bleeding in, bleeding out.
You're a medic, need a Band-Aid, if renovation's Band-Aid, it's a salvage at the moment, I don't say it's, that's a long range plan, I'm just saying it's a plan that we can make that building over there more safe to have students in, uh, during this pandemic time, maybe I have a little bit more free time to work. But if you delay this for two years, you talk about six months. Somebody's gonna wanna delay till we get the referendum to see if we got support for a tax increase. If you don't.
What concerns me now that we're talking about consolidating the high school and middle school compound, if it could be over there and we put ten or twelve million dollars into a sprawling building now, does that impede or interfere with that concept of combining the high school with facilities, the track, whatever, into one compound? We've still got, with twelve million, this, we've still got an old sprawling building with s- serious security issues, so I, I'd hate to spend ten million dollars to kill an ideal piece of property and concept that's been brought up here, and I appreciate Josh's approach, this man, this youthful mind is something, uh, and I, I don't have a problem with supporting, and I know all these issues, particularly this mold and moisture issue, and saw the document that Josh found, that the liaisons didn't even know about, I would have voted no on this renovation, I was hesitant, I, I didn't have enough information last time I voted, my fault, but, uh, I, I appreciate what Josh is doing here, this, this idea he's got, and, uh, I don't have a problem with voting to postpone for a reasonable length, sure it's gonna cost us money, a lot of labor into this thing, hopefully everybody's getting paid for their time on working on this, I think it's a worthy pursuit. Now, this affects the C- capital improvement plan, those are issues we gotta deal with, but education is important. If we have rotten, rundown buildings, uh, uh.
I would like to make note the capital improvement plan did not discuss school buildings, it didn't even go over them, so we can go over all the plans, they didn't even see the nineteen sixty-four high school, nineteen seventy-four middle school, I feel like if that, if they would have been, likely would have been a priority, but, uh.
Gary mentioned that.
Derek would address that.
This project, the Macon Middle School renovation project was first brought to the county's attention by the school system in October of twenty seventeen. At this time, the county put it into the county's capital improvement plan. At this time, the school board estimated this renovation project to be about two point seven million dollars for a complete renovation, so that's what they provide, again, the school board, we solicit that from them, they provide their needs back to us. So in May of twenty nineteen, following the inclusion of this project into the capital improvement plan for the county, we contracted with Novus Architecture. And Novus Architecture, as you'll recall, that we've worked with them on numerous other school projects, they conducted a building assessment of the Macon Middle School, and in this report, um, in the summary of this report, it says, in general, this building has been well cared for and is in good to fair condition, with recommended renovations, the building could continue to serve the school system well for years. So that was in May of twenty nineteen. Now, in August of twenty nineteen, the school board approved the RFQ for Architectural Services at the Macon Middle School project, so after we reviewed this report and, and met the liaison committees, we decided, let's move forward with these renovations at the Macon Middle School. So upon that, we received five responses to this request for qualifications, um, that were submitted to the county on September twenty-third of twenty nineteen. All architects were evaluated and scored by school system and county representatives based on their qualifications. On October eighth of twenty nineteen, um, Mr. Gibbs informed the Macon County Board of Commissioners that the seven-member selection committee comprised of Terry Bell, Todd Gibbs, Brad Goldsmith, Tracy Towne, and Jack Morgan, Gary Shields, and Scott Maslin unanimously recommended SGA Narmore Wright to serve as the project architect to move forward with contract negotiations. So in October of eighth of twenty nineteen, we, we started to move forward with SGA Narmore Wright with contract negotiations. And during this time period, um, you know, there was a lot of, of discussions with, with respect to the scope of work, we wanted to be sure that, um, that this scope of work and many of these questions, like the emails regarding the moisture, um, those were brought up in, at, in February, and we discussed these things and what were the, gonna be the most critical issues that needed to be addressed, that's what we felt like would be pertinent to this renovation process. So all this was between October and February, where we were going back and forth with the architect, we had our committee made up of school system representatives and county representatives that were working hand in hand with the architect, and on February eleventh twenty twenty, the, the Board of Commissioners meeting, the architect came back to us, and reading an excerpt from the minutes here, it says, Mr. Rowland noted that one of the primary takeaways from the board's February sixth mid-year budget review was to obtain answers to a number of questions regarding the scope of services at Macon Middle School that were contained in the Architectural Services Contract. And at this time, Mr. Seeley was present at this meeting, and he addressed the questions that were presented by the Board of Commissioners, and at that time, the Board of Commissioners unanimously approved the architectural contract. And between February eleventh and June of twenty twenty, um, we, we got the scope ready to go, we got everything ready to bid out on this project, and again, that was working the committee made up of school system and county representatives there in those four or five months, uh, after that February eleventh meeting when the contract was approved. So we settled on a scope of the project, and at this time, the project was revised, as I said, it was originally put in the capital improvement plan in twenty seventeen, it was revised at this time to be fifteen million in the capital improvement plan, so the most, the FY twenty capital improvement plan will reflect, uh, a Macon Middle School renovation project of fifteen million rather than two point seven, which was revised by the school board and presented back to the county for incorporation into that document. So in June twenty twenty, there was much uncertainty around the COVID-nineteen pandemic, you gotta keep in mind, um, that was in the, uh, probably the height of uncertainty to do with the COVID pandemic. So we, we had discussions at this time with the architect, again, this committee that was made up of representatives from the school system and the county about this project, and most importantly, we discussed postponing this project, and the architect informed us, he said, okay, when the plans are ninety-five percent complete in August, just before we go into this bid process, it's a good, it's a clean breaking point, we can sever it right there, we can postpone this project for up to ninety days, as was called for in the architect contract. On September thirtieth, the selection committee met, uh, in this commissioners' room, and again, it wasn't a public meeting, it was a meeting of the committee that, uh, that we had established to go through this process with each other, we, we met here to discuss the final plans that the architect presented to us, as well as the future of moving this project forward. And at this time, there was much discussion on how important this was and how that the renovation project, that it was important that we continue moving forward regardless of the economic uncertainty. So at this point, uh, we decided to put this project out to bid. On October thirteenth of twenty twenty, the Board of Commissioners unanimously approved a, a pre-qualification committee that was tasked with, uh, it was four members of the county and four members of the school system, that was tasked with the architect plans that we put out to review when those contractors submitted the plans back, before we even submitted the plans out, we wanted to look at all contractors who were interested in bidding, there were six of them, we, this, uh, pre-qualification committee looked at each one of these contractors to make sure that each of them could be pre-qualified to do the type of critical renovations that were needed at the Macon Middle School. So the, on October thirteenth, the Board of Commissioners approved this committee, and the committee, again, was made up of four county representatives and four school system representatives. On December tenth, the pre-qualification committee qualified all six construction firms that had submitted interest in this project, so at the point that these, uh, that this, that these contractors had submitted and said, hey, we're interested and we've pre-qualified them, that's looking at their, uh, the projects they've completed, um, the size of the projects, the qualifications of each member of the firm, we released the bids, and on January fourth, um, we had the pre-bid meeting. So on January twelfth of twenty twenty-one, um, we approved our findings resolution to submit to the local government commission, we set a public hearing date, we presented and discussed bank loans versus bond issuance, our financial advisors were here, we approved the inter-local agreement between the Macon County and the schools, and February ninth, we held that public hearing, we, we received final approval of financing terms and documents, and we awarded the construction bid to New Atlantic Contract, and that, of course, is contingent upon LGC approval and our successful closing of the loan, and most recently, on February twenty-second, the resolution approved by the school board, uh, affirming their determination to carry out the project in cooperation with the county. So that's just a brief, uh, that is just a brief timeline that I tried to put together today to bring, uh, some perspective in, in, and the, uh, like I say, we have a great working relationship, like's been mentioned here today, and there's a lot of people that, that have spent a lot of time here, and again, it's not, it's not up to any of, of the administrative staff at the county or the school level to, to weigh in on the merits of either direction that this board should decide to take, but I feel like it is our responsibility to kinda lay out, uh, to you what has led up to this project and kinda the steps that we went through in doing it, um, you know, it, it's not something we, we started working on last month, it's not something, uh, it's something that was identified by the Board, uh, Board of Education in twenty seventeen, we put it into our capital planning documents, um, and we, at, with full cooperation and approval at each step of the way by both of the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education, uh, we've been able to get this project here to where it is today, and I've heard some mention of postponing it, and Lori, can you, that is one reason that this special meeting was called today, um, is because time is of the essence, as you'll recall, we decided to issue bonds for this project, and March first will be the date that we issue our position statement for these bonds that we
Preliminary, preliminary.
Or, yes, for these bonds, which we will be, um, will be getting them, will be issuing them on March eighth.
Selling the bonds March eighth.
So.
Looking to close the loan March twenty-fifth, and LGC approvals March second, and the construction bids expire April second.
So if we postpone this project today, that, that LGC meeting that's on March second, all that, all that stuff will have to be moved back a month, which will then make our construction bids lapse, which will, the bids are no good anymore at that point, so that is why it is critical, um, that, again, that's why we called this special meeting today, that we decide a, um, a path to take from here, because if we don't, we are, we are, we will jeopardize this project being able to be carried out.
We spent a million dollars already.
That, that, yes, roughly a million dollars, we, and that, again, goes to, um, you know, architect fees, our fees for our bond council, financial advisors, and, and everyone, you know, that has been involved in the course of planning and getting this project to where it is today. But again, that's just, I wanted to give you a timeline just to, um, there were questions, we have had, uh, questions when developing the scope of this project, we've had questions throughout, but it was questions that, um, as you saw and is reflected in the minutes, that, you know, many of these we, we've discussed, and the architect was here, uh, to discuss them with us, we were aware, as well as the school board.
All right, um. Mr. Chairman, with your permission, can I correct a couple of things?
Sure.
I'm not trying to be disagreeable, but some of the figures we just heard, I'm not quite sure were exact, the two point seven million, and I may look back at Tracy as I talk and see, first, two point seven million figure we first heard about was simply a quote on the HVAC system at the Macon Middle School at that point in time, it was not for the renovation of the, of the facility as a whole, that this, uh, this, you can do what we're talking about doing on the two point seven, so that's where that figure came from. In the interim, uh, if you don't mind me saying, I'll answer your question, at the beginning, when we first started talking about some plans, the very thing that Mr. Young is talking about was one of the, was one of the alternatives we discussed in the liaison meetings about combining, uh, our facilities, of course, we also had several discussions about building on site where we're at now. I think our architects went to doing that, where you build as, while school's going on, and of course, then we also found several sites, put me wrong about the ball one moment, about seven or eight sites on requests of work commisters for, uh, possible school sites for a high school. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, we feel like during the discussion, there have been some alternatives discussed as we move forward to where we're at now. discussed as we move forward to where we're at now. Does that make sense? So I think as far as the plan goes, we're well aware, as you're talking about, the need. We're talking about very expensive projects. We're talking about a huge investment by the county commissioners as far as maintaining our school system. And I guess I just wanted to say that this has been an ongoing process. And I'll end by saying, as we said, we appreciate what Josh has done. As I said, excellent amount of things we talked about earlier. But to clarify, we've been working with the, I think with commissioners. And whenever we were asked to step up and do like what we vote for the, to go for the RFQ and those type of things, we have done so, trying to help expedite and move forward based on the direction, the way we felt like commissioners wanted it, that they felt like what they felt, based on our meetings with liaisons, what they felt was the best path as far as reaching. And then, and then the final thing I want to address was, at our last meeting, I think the documents you were talking about were about some of the issues. That was a statement that actually we had gotten from architects about with the plan, with where we're heading, that was still some concerns. So the document you were talking about, that was part of what we received from commissioners during our previous liaison meetings. So hopefully that clarifies a couple of things for you. I'll be glad to answer your question about what I just said.
And this is improvement to the overall school system.
Oh, yeah.
But it's, it's piecemeal.
Right.
Band-aid.
Right. Please understand what I'm saying. We are not going to step in, it's not our job to tell y'all what to do. That's not how it works. We're here to help be a part of the process. We just ask for opinions. We're very appreciative that you do so. But obviously, that final decision, as far as the money you're going to spend in the final plan, is a decision made by the board commissioners, not by the Board of Education.
We're the ones that has to sell it to the taxpayers.
Exactly. You're the ones that have to answer the questions after you've made your choices and do the things that you have to do. So like, Mr. Tate's comment about commissioner anguish, trust me, I don't have, we don't have a fraction of what you do at the Board of Education. So I'm very, that's a heck of a good term to describe what goes on, I'm sure, with what y'all attempt to do to the best. So like I said, our final involvement was just what we said. We done, we're not proposing, trying to say we feel like, we're not saying this is what we want you to do, this is not what we should, blah, blah. We're just simply saying we're here to listen. Mr. Young asked, would we support an extension if that's what y'all chose to do? And our answer is, we will certainly do that. So if I haven't said that, I'll shut up.
Other than the loss of time, money in the planning to where we're at right now. Those that building and the high school's not going to fall down next week, is it?
It's not. But I think when we were talking, to answer your question, I was, I was talking, expressed this to Josh, we were talking about, if we do delay, depending on the length of time to delay, there's going to have to be some things done to that building, whether we keep it for a while or what. Because bluntly, there's some things going on, like Tracy's talking about, in the foundation, watered downstairs with the guttering system, it's not going to get better. So you'd have to do some things regardless. In addition, if you postpone it very long, just to simply preserve that building where it gets to a state where it's just not usable whatsoever for anything in the future.
Well, Mr. Reed Love is talking about, that's exactly when I refer to bleeding out.
Right.
You're bleeding out. I've got a feeling, and I mean, Tracy, you know, has the health department been in that building?
Not that I know of.
To make an evaluation?
Not in the basement, only for our kitchen facilities.
But have they, have they done a walk-through to see?
Not, not that we're aware of, no.
No, they don't do school facilities other than-
Right.
Food service.
Correct.
All right.
One more comment. I could explain to the people that I represent that I voted to lose a million dollars as to spend 10 or 12 million and still wind up with issues. And there's some red flags being raised from these reports that I've not been involved in the school liaison. We can't attend the school board liaison and county commissioner liaison meeting. So we have two liaisons, three county commissioners can't meet anywhere without conflict or, you know, so I've not been in, I've not been privy to a lot of the discussions. So I just, I think there's some big red flags raised here.
I don't, I don't like the word band-aid for $10 million in a building. I hope that's getting more along the lines of a plastic surgeon. But anyway, just from my understanding in response to you, Paul, I made that into a joke, of course. But I think, and from my understanding from digging into it, is that it's a lot more than just a band-aid. I mean, their, the architect, Derek, what did you say earlier is going to give us, he's projecting 20 to 25 years on this building. I don't think it's an optimum position by any means. But my stomach is in an absolute knot right now over this. And I was trying to think about, I felt this feeling before. And I think it reminds me when my kid was about trying not to well up in tears. Was about three years old and he was wanting a toy, and I couldn't afford it. And it's a similar situation with this. Yeah, I want, I want, I want this new high school. I want that football field. I want it. But how do we afford it? How do we pay for it? I feel like we always look for reasons not to do things. What if we took the time to look for reasons for why we should do it, how we can do it, instead of why we shouldn't do it? It's painful. I really don't know which way to go with this. I want to get this school fixed. I want to give, get these repairs made. I feel like 10 million is a lot more than a band-aid. But at the same time, I don't want to take Josh's exuberance that he's putting into this. And I don't want to pull, I don't want to pull the reins back on him when he's, when he's got something he's running with, with a good idea. So I'm tough. I'm torn. I really am on this. Derek, what do you think? I'm just trying to run through some numbers in my mind. If we pull, let's just say we pull back for 90 days. I mean, I understand the headache, the paperwork headache. What do you think the cost will be besides the opportunity for contracts to change? Are there any other hidden costs? Are there costs with our financials? Are there costs with the bond market? Is there, Lori, do you want to address that?
So if we postpone for 90 days-
It's just an idea. I'm just asking. I don't know. And I think there's a, we haven't even discussed it. But I think there's a whole liability issue. We've already awarded contracts. I mean, I've signed the documents. Is there a liability issue there?
Just to say, like we mentioned before, we're set Monday, this coming Monday, March 1st, to issue the preliminary official statement. A week from Monday on March 8th, we're scheduled to sell the bonds. You know, the LGC is set to approve March 2nd. The construction bids expire April 2nd. So let's just say we postpone 90 days from today. I'm a little fuzzy on the LGC approval. I don't know if they could go ahead and approve it Tuesday, knowing that we may be a little delayed. I really don't know the answer to that. But they meet once a month, and it's the first Tuesday of every month. So 90 days, you'd be looking at, you know, April, May, June, early June at their meeting. As far as the bonds, of course, we, we would have to look to a bond date in June. Yesterday, our true interest cost was 1.77% for the combined financing of Macon Middle School plus the about 11 million of refinancing of current county debt. And that refinancing alone saves us $600,000 over the life of those loans. As far as bids, bids would expire April 2nd. We would have to re-advertise. I'd be surprised if the contractors would hold them for 90 more days. I mean, quite frankly, I mean, you could ask, but I'd be surprised. So you'd have to re-advertise for bids, you know, receive bids again, kind of go through that whole process. Of course, you're subject to price changes. Are these contractors going to have an appetite to go through the bid process again, you know, since we got to this point?
The scope should change, right?
No, the scope wouldn't change, but-
They could go on percentage differences on materials, but overall labor.
As far as awarding the construction bid, from what we received back from Kim Carpenter, since we haven't actually signed a construction contract, don't think we'd have liability there. But of course, like has been mentioned, you know, we've already physically paid out $768,000 on this project, 708,000 of that's for the architect. We owe the architect right now probably about $24,000 on the bidding part. There's still 304,000 for construction admin. That's still an unknown. That's not in this million dollar number. You know, do we legally owe that? Of course, construction admin normally doesn't happen until construction starts. So do we have a legal obligation to pay that 300,000? I'm not sure at this point. The other roughly 200,000 estimate, as was spoken earlier, you know, we've, we've had to hire underwriters, bond counsel, our financial advisors. We've had Moody's and Standard and Poor's rate these bonds because we've decided to go for a public sale. We've received some confidential ratings on those, but we can't share them yet because they haven't been made public. But, you know, all of these things have costs associated with them. So that's what gets us to roughly a million dollars, you know, put into this project by the time this is said and done. I think that's all I have. Do y'all have any more questions?
Mr. Chairman, with everything that's been discussed, we've given opportunity, you know, what we're going to do is to put a delay here. Nothing's going to get done. We'll come back and have to do the renovations. That's the way I see it. So based on the information given, all the information given and where we're at, where we stand in our timeline, what we've invested in the Macon County taxpayer, Macon County taxpayer today, I make a motion that we move ahead with the renovations, as voted on unanimously by this board and by the school board. And with one caveat, that we authorize the county manager to please go ahead and, and see what processes we would have to do to do the new athletic building at the middle grade school. I'll put that in the form of a motion.
I see. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
No. Hey, we're going to work that. We don't have numbers on this.
No, that's what, that's what my motion said, is to authorize the county manager to proceed to get those-
Just authorize him to-
Just authorize him to look into that, to see if it's feasible during this same time. We might, and what I'm thinking, we might be able to get the same contract. While he's there, might get a pretty good price. So I'm just thinking, that's what I'm thinking.
Are we still kind of just talking right here? Help me with this, Lori. Now, with this project that we're talking about, the renovation to middle school, the contingency money that was left over, we're going to divert that back into the track and some of those, am I right or wrong? I mean, I dream there, if there's leftover.
That's been, that's been brought up, but I don't know if you can do that. The-
You don't know if there'll be any left.
When you borrow money for this project, it has to be spent on this project. Or it can be used to pay down the debt. So I don't think we could divert any contingency money. Because again, that contingency is built into our total loan package. So I don't know that we'd be allowed to divert it to another project. But we could use it to pay down some on the debt.
Good.
I know some, I know someone had expressed that, and I don't know that I was in on that conversation of, of the desire to do that. But I don't know if we legally could.
You could include, Mr. Shields, that. Mr. Carrick fathered authorized the county manager to include that. If, if my motion should pass, let him include that with the construction of the new athletic facility about a new track at middle grade or wherever we, if we got a place we can put him. And some of those things that Josh is really concerned with, and that was the track and the middle school. Me and Louis Taylor-
Needs a new track.
Worked on both.
Needs a new turf field out there.
I think, I think before we just start throwing tracks out there, like we need a plan. Like, we're going to keep, as Mr. Shields talked about, we're going to keep bringing high school students to the middle school. Like, that's, that's what bothers me. It's our, we built three facilities out there, the high school softball, the high school baseball, and the high school soccer. They're all out there. So now we're going to build the track. But, Mr. Shields, we still have the problem that you brought up. Like, are we going to fix the track at the high school? We're going to keep, you know, as Mr. Bill, I mean, there's a creek going to leak there. We know we're wasting money. But again, we just want to authorize money to fix the track at the middle school and say, well, we're just looking to build a high school later, and let's build another track over there. And like, again, I go back to the plan. We need to have these discussions. This is just throwing out crazy thought, like, you know.
We've not seen no crazy thoughts here in about 15 years concerning schools.
I'm very supportive of the plan. Let's, if we go ahead and approve this renovation, educational improvement for Rob Hall's clear. You won't hear a mention of, I mean, we'll still be sitting here 10 years from now talking about what we're going to do at the high school. They say it's going to be leaking, it's going to be rotting, it could fall off. We've been dressed issue at hand today. We're firefighters. We have a fire, we put it out, wait till the next one. And that's not, that's how most opposition. I'm like John Kerry, I voted for and voted against it.
Yeah, it's, it's a tough one. What concerns me the most about voting to delay this is just that we're delaying something that's inevitable. And I mentioned to Josh when he first asked me about this two weeks ago, that we might be just a little bit late to the party with this one. But it's hard. I just feel like there's just, there's just a lot of unknowns. I love the concept. I love the idea. And I know there's a way to make it happen. But is it, there's just, there's just a lot of unknowns there. It's how you pay for it. It's how you get the DOT to work. It's how you, and, you know, I'm afraid that we're, again, I don't like the word band-aid. I feel like 10 million is a lot more than a band-aid. But-
I would like to say one more thing. I mean, we've talked about a lot up here. And just about every person on this board has pretty much admitted that we're putting a band-aid out there. It's on record. But secondly-
I've heard you not hear me admit that.
Secondly, there's a record. I mean, there's a reason. There's a reason a rearview mirror is a whole lot smaller than the windshield. Like Mr. Tate said, we can all find a reason not to do something. I'm not asking to terminate the plants. I'm not asking to scrap it. I'm just saying, let's just stop a minute, just tap the brakes. Okay, 90 days, if that's what you suggest, let's talk about it again. But by then, we can, we can ask Mr. Rowland and ask Mr. Morgan. We can go out there and see if it even works. Again, we're going to spend 13 million dollars on renovations and the high school track's still falling apart. Like, again, we're just, hey, yeah, like Mr. Paul says, we're firefighters. And secondly, on this capital improvement plan, it's been bothering me, but we talked about the jail and everything else. But would we rather build a big, beautiful jail or a big, beautiful high school, middle school? I mean, it's, to me, I think they're hand in hand, cause and effect.
I disagree with that comment, Josh.
Me too. All right. We've called the question. I still don't know what's going to go.
All questions, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All in favor of proceeding ahead with the renovation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, with that being said, I'm the man in the middle here. So I'll be on, I'll be ready to say that I do like Mr. Bill's thoughts that we need to get rolling with some improvements to the athletic facilities at Macon Middle School. I'd love to see that filled turf. I'd love to see the track repaired. I'd love to see the facilities put in out there. I'm also going to give Josh my word, if he doesn't kick me in the chin here in a minute and step on me, but I will give you my word. My background is in land planning, and I am going to move forward with helping you keep your enthusiasms. And I will help you solve the problem of how we're going to move this forward. And if it, if it costs us, we're looking at a $100 million project, and if this 10 million renovation is 10% of that problem, then, then so be it. You can point at me down the road and say, I made the biggest mistake ever, and I cost the county $10 million. But I feel like we're delaying an inevitable here. But I am ready to move forward. And I'm giving you my word on it here, man. And I know, like I say, you're not happy with me now. And that, that hurts me too. So-
Mr. Chairman, I think you finished the vote.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. We had three ayes. Opposed?
Aye.
There you go.
Motion to the chair, Mr. Chairman.
A motion to the chair. Got a motion to adjourn.